I'm going to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It is seven P M. and we are in the municipal meeting room. On the agenda, well, let's start with a roll call from the far end.
Marty Kane.
Susan Sinnet.
James Lowery.
Tom McGinn.
Paul Green.
Susan Roth.
And I'm Rich Canone, the chair. We have before us an approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes for November first, two thousand twenty-two, a public comment. We then have public hearings, the item, Cape Arundel Cottage Preserve, a subdivision amendment. Under Old Business, we have the same item. And then, under Other Business, we have a planner workshop on board procedures and protocols. And when we're all done, we'll go home before the snow starts.
Tom McGinn.
Second.
Motion by Marty Kane, seconded by Susan Roth, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes for November first, two thousand twenty-two.
Move to approve, as written.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Paul Green. I pulled a complete blank on his first name, and I didn't think calling him Mr. Green Jeans would be appropriate.
That guy right there.
Again.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one abstention. Six in favor, one abstention.
I'm sorry, who was the abstention?
Jamie.
You had to ask? Okay. Next item is public comment, and since there's nobody here from the public, we will skip right over that, and we will go to the... I'm almost tempted to skip right over the public hearing, because there's nobody here from the public hearing either. So I'm going to open the public hearing at seven oh three, and I'm going to close it at seven oh three, due to a lack of anyone being here. We will go straight into the Old Business item number one, Cape Arundel Cottage Preserve, Seventh Subdivision Amendment. Amendment to Phase Five B of the seasonal cottage resort, a minor adjustment of units one sixty-three, two fifty-four, and two fifty-nine, and the creation of a common drive by a Palalini Way. The property is located on Tax Map eleven, Lot nine, in the BI Zone. Cape Arundel Cottage Preserve is the applicant. Frederick White? I never knew that. Is the applicant's agent. You don't mind if we call you Rick, do you?
I guess I might. Thank you. Again, there we're talking about this last phase of the project. And again, just to summarize quickly, all we're at level four to is to move unit two fifty-four from here over to here, ships over to fifty-nine, so making this a two-unit driveway. Count all, see when they add that, test out any problem with it, except for let's go the public way. And then we added another unit, all one sixty-three, in the spot right here, it's a vacant land here, which was, again, for some reason, there were three units, one sixty-three, one sixty-four, one sixty-five, which were not built in Phase Four. Frontier, well, you have to say it's four, although you're frontier, because our pond, which doesn't show up here, grew, the D P rules, it gathered those three units. So those three units have been basically in the stenchia for the rest of the whole project, we have to find a place to put them. We found a place to replace one of those units, all one sixty-three. So it's something, the whole project approved two hundred and sixty-three units and minus three, because we didn't have the three before, would have been two sixty-three. But this is all comes out, minus five. We'll have two hundred and sixty-one units disrupted, but two hundred and sixty-three will be. So that's pretty much the change that we're asking for more to than planned. And then, secondarily, the board has asked that we go to the fire chief to discuss the connection with both hit that away and see if he had anything to serve about this, the shared driveway for the fifty-four, the fifty-nine. We did discuss with the chief, and I think he sent an email out that he's acceptable with the plan. And during that period too, I wanted to say to the board, I could give you a handout of what is trying to change. Sorry, but it's scale, it's good to plan. Changes which are in red on the next corner. You want to try and meet them, because you probably can't. What? I hear both of them on the board, so if I could describe what's going on here.
Thank you.
The boy's glasses. I take them off the reason. We're going to actually, I have the actual plan and scale here, but I'm going to use the veteran's, what we want to do up in this area here, they plan, this is a twenty-foot roadway, which we're also remembering. The approval has us connecting through the meadows, which is the property line right here. And and we have, of course, the emergency gate, a temporary gate, right along the hundred-foot setback line. And now that we discuss that, now that we're completing, we'll be completing this end of the road, we don't want the residents to feel like it's, you're coming to the end of the road, we want to dress up a little bit, make it really compatible the rest of the scale development. So what we're proposing is to move the gate up about twenty, twenty-five feet, quicker really, if you've got a final design, like a nice wooden gate, something that's really, you know, makes a statement relative to the, what the project's all about, and do some landscaping around, we look a nice little plan. And then I got thinking, you know, having a twenty-foot roadway connection, seven, seventy-five feet, connecting to the twenty-four-foot gravel road, could look like an airstrip for people living there. And so we would suggest that we just narrow going, having the pavement go beyond the gates of fifteen feet, narrowing it fourteen feet at the gate, and keeping a fourteen-foot wide lane, which is plenty simple for our entire maintenance to go to that, that's adequate for their use. So basically, a twenty-foot pavement road, a gate, a short section pavement, just after the gate, and then a fourteen-foot, you know, gravel standing out to pick that up from there. And otherwise, otherwise we just have to take over here, it's going to be terribly crowded. And if you've been out to the site, you recognize this is all basic lawn, this is a level over here, and all this is the property, that corner is the property of Cape Arundel. It's been sort of used by the waters without any injections, sort of the lawn areas, so he went along. So that is a change that we, we, the board, we suggested, discussed with the lead judge of the board, was to make a note on approval, the final proof, design a gate or something, subject to staff review or something. I anticipate that we do a design of that, make it look really nice, and if the board could vary, we have the approval conditions, as it's a copy of the staff. But that's pretty much it. And questions for the board?
Yeah, Marty, go ahead.
Where your new gate's going to be, wherever, ten, twenty, whatever else, do you have a bypass, I'm going to call it, so that if they want to, residents up there, they can get onto the Eastern Trail without going through the gate?
For pedestrians, actually, that's a, for the chair, Marty, that's a really good question, because if you were, oh, I actually was telling you. When the board signed the original plan since two thousand ten, and it signed a couple copies, I put a virtual copy, like, right next to my desk. And one of the notes about the gate, and we're supposed to, you know, make sure that you can't drive a car around.
Right.
And so I imagine our landscape department, like, in fact, is going to come up with a nice little detail, this area, probably have a bunch of plantings here, and it's bold, like, now. So the answer is, anybody who wants to walk around the gate, lap a fast, easy jog or ride a bike, no problem. If they wanted to go to the gate, it doesn't matter. Is there a line to drive?
No, I mean, like, on the old Limerick Road, where you cross it from the trail, you know, like, I call bumpers, I mean, so that bike can go through, you know, not an ATV or anything else, but I'm just saying, they can have a passageway or along that way.
I think you might have seen the question yet, on the Easter trail, that connection to the flow of all those, uh, the tunnel, wall, walls. And here, where the, where the trail's going to start and to turn around, it's something here, but at the gate, I think the chief, we're going to have a gate that comes together, but the chief's purposes are not spots on the block. So we'll make sure that, I mean, there would be room to go around it, so they can go around.
I don't know where the Eastern Trail comes up through. You know, that's why I was just wondering, in an easy access, I mean, you know, just to get on the trail, that's why I was saying.
Yeah, there'll be room for itself in the white here, that it gets through, technically, it's probably, probably, but not going to, yeah.
Yeah, just as long.
To the chair, doesn't that road cross the Eastern Trail anyway?
It does cross.
Yeah, farther up, so I'm saying, like, if people wanted to go onto the Eastern Trail from the meadows, it's basically, you walk up straight, Marty, and it gets right on the trail. So, so when you're talking about your landscaping and having it be nice, there would be, like, basically, like, paths or ears before the trees start, so that you can walk around it without going through the bushes.
Right. And to be clear, we're not encouraging in the oral, we're not assigning, sending private.
Correct.
From a security perspective, we're not encouraging or asking for folks to come across the Eastern Trail into the project this way, or even this way, the sign. What we're saying is, the residents, the three or four residents here, want to get on the trail. It's all, people starting to use that from the public, I think, there would be an issue with that.
I would just think the residents of the community.
Yeah.
I mean, not from outsiders coming in.
Just the residents.
Just the residents. You know, we put signs, private property, I mean.
Right, and we'll be probably, once, we have to have signs, or we'll be putting up the, basically, says, sort of there, there's a sign that says. In Meadows, right, so you don't, the Meadows does not want, and that's already there. So enforcement thing is important to the condo association.
Any other questions? Hearing none.
You ready to turn your water off? The springs are out front?
Uh, pretty soon, yes. Ron, Bryce are, he's got samples, they can there, Paul.
Okay. Under Phase eleven point one, under ordinance section eleven point one for pollution, it is not applicable. Eleven point two for water is not applicable. Eleven point three, the impact on existing water supplies is not, not applicable. Eleven point four for soil erosion is not applicable. Eleven point five for traffic conditions is not applicable. Eleven point six for sewage disposal is not applicable. Eleven point seven, impact on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste is not applicable. Eleven point eight, preservation of natural beauty and aesthetics is not applicable. Eleven point nine, conformance with the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and other land use ordinances, this development is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Eleven point ten, financial and technical capacity is not applicable, the proposed amendments will not impact the financial ability of the developer to carry out this project. Eleven point eleven, impact on water quality or shoreline is not applicable. Eleven point twelve, impact on groundwater quality or quantity is not applicable. Eleven point thirteen, floodplain management is not applicable. Eleven point fourteen, identification of freshwater wetlands, the wetlands are not being impacted with this footprint adjustment. Eleven point fifteen, stormwater management is not applicable. Eleven point sixteen, reservation or dedication and maintenance of open space and common land facilities and services is not applicable. Eleven point seventeen, compliance with timber harvesting standards is not applicable. So conclusion being, the criteria of Title thirty A, Section four, four, zero, one, has been met as part of this review. The applicable standards of the Arundel subdivision regulations and conditional use standards have been met. Based on the above facts and conclusions on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Arundel Planning Board approved the application for the Cape Arundel Cottage Preserve amended subdivision as it relates to the sub, the planned subdivision dated October seventh, two thousand twenty-two, so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this fifteenth day of November, two thousand twenty-two. With a motion?
Yeah.
No, no. Make a motion.
I moved it.
Okay. Motion made by Marty Kane to adopt, seconded by Susan Roth.
Susan Sinnet.
Susan Sinnet, sorry.
I'm thinking of the notes, I got it right.
Anybody have any discussion or comments? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations.
We'll keep here, okay, no, we'll be signed, so we'll be assigned, like, tomorrow, Friday, and we'll have, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
How many others?
Yeah.
Have gone down and, they've all gone down there, they've all been a big guy.
Does it mean though?
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I want to, want to see which, I don't think it's. I must get there, absolutely, yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Yeah, they can walk right, right over the hill there. Yeah, that's convenient.
We are working on D O T, the highway, moves to the D O T, and those are, design. The D O T actually requested that the trail connection to the facility, thinking you people would, they would walk on the shoulder of one, I couldn't imagine, nobody's ever going to walk down to one thing that anyway.
I think take the bomb cards over.
Drive down Route one.
I think the trail through the.
The trail.
Isn't it fairly steep? Getting down in behind there?
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. I think the trail, the trail through the trees would be a great idea. The only people that are going to walk down Route one are people that don't know what Route one is like.
Just the trees that are approved by us. And you live to tell about it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item up is the planners workshop on board procedures and protocols.
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone? I can hardly hear you, Mr. Chair.
I'm going to sit down here, I'm looking because you have a mic here.
We can all see you.
And you'll see me. So you're not looking all the way down there with your neck right there. So last week, Rich approached me and wanted to do, not a workshop on, on state law and process and procedures, but more about process and procedure here with this board locally, and how we operate. So I tried to put something together, I may not hit all of the high notes, I'm sure there's opportunity for discussion on some of the stuff. But we were planning on doing this as PowerPoint tonight, and there's no U S B port to plug it in, so it'll be a talking head, me, and you all have a copy of the presentation, so we'll just go through that. So what I developed was issues for discussion is the mission of the planning board, when the packet is ready, questions are okay, contact Anne, LJ, if you're not attending. Attendance is important, bylaws and understanding of ordinances. And so that's pretty much the table of contents for the discussion, and then I've got some notes and other things for us to discuss. So, under the mission statement, don't forget, you have one in your bylaws. And it says, the purpose of the Arundel Planning Board are to maintain a continuing land use program, which is what we do with the ordinance update and development review, and to review and make decisions on complete applications submitted for subdivision or development plan approval pursuant to the Arundel subdivision standards and Arundel land use ordinance. So those are really the charges and the mission of, of the board. Excuse me if I do something crazy tonight, I had both my flu shot and my COVID, COVID variant shot today, so I've gotten two shots this morning. Oh, yes.
I didn't feel anything when I had mine, so you're fine. I had them both the same time, nothing happened.
Did you? So far, so good. So your packets, I think it's just important, as a reminder, that when your packets are ready, and Anne lets you know, please do the following, pick them up or let us know that you're not going to be attending the meeting. I know, just from her standpoint, she's very busy, she's got a lot on her plate, and she sees the packets sit out there, and sit out there, and sit out there, and then when I come in on Monday before the Tuesday meeting, she, you know, gets, well, people haven't come in and picked up their packets, are they coming in the meeting? We don't know. So if you can, I know it's hard, I know some, some folks want to get it electronically, and we're trying to do that the best we can, sometimes, you know, some of the packets, some of the projects are very large electronically, but please, just let Anne know that you'll be coming, and that you'll get in to get the packet. Read a look through the documentation, don't be afraid to ask Anne, the chair, or myself questions regarding the information. Remember, this will kind of get into the ex, ex parte communications, but don't talk amongst yourselves about the stuff, but if you've got questions, don't hesitate to contact me, especially if it's technical stuff, or Rich, or Anne, if it's something to do with, with documentation. And this can help the meeting flow better, if we can take care of some of those questions ahead of time, if there are any. And again, questions are okay. To ask any of us, just remember, do not engage in dialogue with other board members, or the applicant, or the public, just staff or the chair. Attendance, attendance is very important for the following reasons.
Do not practice, I mean, one, for a particular application, you will need to review the statement you have, that you have, you can make an objective decision on the application. This is vital, especially when it may be a contentious application. But if you're not at the meetings, please review the minutes, please review the video, and then after being, take the, you can make an objective decision on an application, look at the other material. Also, your bylaws state in Section three E, the following, should any member, without prior notice and without good cause, he absent from work consecutive, regularly scheduled meetings, or fail in any six-month period to attend at least fifty percent of the regularly scheduled meetings on the board, then the chair shall contact the board member and request a statement of intent. If there is no response within one month, then the member shall be deemed to represent sign from the board. Chair, who can send this to all the board, shall notify the town manager, so they can call you back. Will that make you more than, by the intent, just make sure it comes in the meeting with the chair?
Pretty much, I think those are two separate criteria. There's the, the four consecutive meetings, or fifty percent of the meetings for the last six months. So you, we, you know, if, if you, if you make it for the first four months and then miss the last two months, you, you'll still have the fifty percent, but you will have blown the four, the four minutes, the four meetings, so we need to be careful of that.
I had a question, it didn't make sense to me. You said, if you, if you want to vote on a particular item, okay, to go look at the minutes, go look at the meeting, but then you can vote after it's already been voted on?
No, if it's, if you're at a preliminary level, or the application's table, if it's still in review process.
Yep.
That's when you'll be able to look at the minutes, look at the tape, and then at the next meeting, when the application is being voted on, or being considered additional, that's where you would announce from the rest of the board, and the public, if you have, review the information you're comfortable with.
All right, that makes sense. The other one wasn't making any sense to me. Man, it doesn't make sense.
But, but if you're absent, you still can do it on Zoom, and review the meeting, can't just?
You can review the video, problems.
No, I mean, if.
Oh, if you're on Zoom at the next meeting, because you're not physically present here, yes, you can still do the same, same thing, you still have to just announce yourself. And you look at that information.
Right.
If, if you remember, Marty, at one point, there was an affidavit that Leah had sent out that we had to sign, if we weren't in the meeting, we had to sign it saying we had watched that video. That was fun.
That was for contentious.
It was a contentious issue, so we had to make sure that everybody.
It could apply to any application, if they challenge it. Yeah, technically, it would, but most important, if it's a contentious one, that the lawyers are involved.
Also, what's the, what happens if they go into lockdown again? When do we decide?
If we go into lockdown again, you'll be one of the first seven people to know about it. Because I'll, I'll send out an email, if we get, if the situation gets so bad that we have to go to, to shut down and go back to Zoom, I'll send everybody an email. That's what, that's what the policy now is. I will, I will notify everybody, and we will just go back to doing it on Zoom.
No, it's, it's our decision.
It's my decision.
Well, I'm meaning, planning board, meaning you.
Yes.
That.
Yeah, it's the, it's the.
That's the other side.
It's the chair's decision, and that's what our policy states.
Just want to make, make, making all this notes for attendance.
Right, so next, next month, when we make you the chair, it'll become your decision.
All right, remember your bylaws. Remember to look at your bylaws, and all the documents. This document gives the guidance process of planning, establishes the overall process for the fall. It does note, in your bylaws, the broadest fees are, are to be used, C section four, C one, and seven, that. However, the bylaws provide the overarching guidelines for the activity. The bylaws really establish the processes and procedures of how the board should operate in the meeting. Bylaws can't mistake. If the board wishes to change anything to the bylaws, we may consider doing so under Section eight amendments, this does not require any other countermeasures, just as, so you don't have to take, you don't have to slide forward, you don't have to take a meeting, or change, the bylaws are for the changing.
Except for salary.
I got no control over that.
So, and that, I just looked at my, my folder, I don't, I can't see the bylaws, I can't remember the last time I looked at them.
Okay.
They are available on the town website.
I have a copy also.
But yeah, they, they are available on the town website. It's only what, three or four pages long.
No point in wasting anymore.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Okay, and then understanding the comprehensive plan and ordinances. Lastly, understanding your ordinances, the land use ordinance is established with guidance, comprehensive plan. In a sense, the guiding principles found in the comprehensive plan. Help establish the process you have in the ordinances. There are many nuances in the ordinances that you should try to be comfortable with, such as one of the thresholds for cycle review and conditional use. Why some zones may allow certain uses and others do not, and how the idea of densities have come about. Do not think, do not think certain ideas are what you want in the ordinance. But what does the comprehensive plan provide for guidance? Subdivision regulations are specifically guided by state laws. So when you're looking at the zoning ordinance, if there's thoughts of, you know, why are we doing this or why are we doing that? You have to go back to looking at the comprehensive plan and see what the goals, policies and strategies in that document are. They usually set up an established process of. The goal is the big picture. Policy is, we want to do this in the town, this is why. And then the strategy is, this is how we're going to do it. Everything in the comprehensive plan is going to get adopted, whether it is the overarching document or the town. And for the folks especially in the planning community.
I, I think that's good. I do, I do, I see something in this very last section that we have not been doing recently. For probably the past year or so. For probably the. Wow, for probably the past year or so, we have not been taking votes on conditional use. Related to each one of the ordinances like we used to. We had, there were ten different items. At, at tonight, I just read the list of, of items, but in the past, we voted on every one of them. And our bylaws call for us to vote on every one of them, which was something I did not realize until earlier today.
Even, and is there a difference between it being not applicable and not impacting?
Yes, we would have to vote on each one of them. Correct. Yeah, and I think that's something that, that we could look at. Because quite honestly, having, it, it's one thing to read all of those, but have to read them and stop and take a vote and then go to the next one and read it and stop and take a vote. If, when, when we're going through these and I am reading them and we get to eleven point seven. Stormwater use or whatever it is, and I say, well, that's not applicable. If you disagree, speak up.
So could, could we make a decision which way to go or is it?
We can either make a decision to, to eliminate the need to, to cite each one of them and have a vote every time, or we can leave it the way it is.
Further that because it does, it becomes unwieldy.
It does.
Especially when you have two or three of them in one night to get through.
And some of them are several pages.
A gunquit does that. I'll tell you, one thing is that they've done it for so long that chairman zips off the statement and then there's a motion and a second. But it does have.
Imagine that no one's going to take us to court because we approved their, their, so it's really what, why they weren't approved. And, and if it's just, because we were doing the all or nothing at the end. And it wasn't clear, well, why, why did you vote us down? So if it's a negative, could I make a motion now that we, that we change that or is it just?
I, I don't know if we can do that at this meeting or if we should. Right, it's a, it's a simple vote, but we need to have the, have, have a good set of wording in terms of how we're going to allow that to function.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though. I thought if you had several criteria. And I'm just going to throw out like stormwater traffic and noise, you know, and. We took a vote on them individually and say they all came down four to three. Different standards, every one of them passed four to three, but different people fought different standards. Were, you know, adhered to and, and not. Then the collective overall vote would still be an affirmative vote for the.
That is correct. If the vote was ever three in favor and four against on one item, on one item, the, the application's done. Right. That, that would not change. What would change is our voting on each one of the, unless there's a, I, I think. Reading through it tonight, if, if, if Tom had been upset with eleven point seven, he could have called for a stop right then, explained why. And ca, and we would have voted on eleven point seven.
I think they have an obligation to do that.
So do I.
So that we have that flexibility. And if there's, if we deem it not applicable and there's no one objecting. And Rich wants to go through it, and then we want to finally either accept or deny. The performance standards, we can't.
You would be doing, you would, by not saying anything, you would be accepting that performance standard.
But leave a, you know, like enough flexibility that we don't have to do it every single time that we.
Could there be a phrase put in that?
Well, no, we're, we're still going to have to read those standards. We just don't want to vote. I don't want to vote on them.
So why couldn't you put words in your bylaws that say prior to reading all those standards, okay, somebody makes a motion to waive. The voting on each one of the standards individually.
I think it should be the other way around. After you read them, you say, does the, does the, does the board agree with? Or would they like to speak about each individual one? There should be some phraseology after they're read. To put it into things is, is whether or not we want to discuss each individual one, so it's checked.
Either way.
No, I don't think either way. I think it should be done after he reads them. I don't think it should be before he reads them. I think it should be after he reads them and then say to check on that regard for discussion.
Well, I think, I think they should be read just so that they're in the record.
Yeah, and then there should be a check from you stating, is there any specific ones that the board would like to talk about and what number versus all or nothing? For people to speak up before there's a vote.
Well, that's, yeah, that, that's what I was trying to get to. We've got a dozen of them. As I'm going through reading them, if there's one that you object to, speak up at that point and say so.
But I think it would be more appropriate and in Robert's rule of order to wait till you read them all and then say, is there anything that I can come back in and go, yeah. Because I think we're just jumping around Robert's rule all the time and just busting in. No, I'm just saying in regard to like the flow of the meeting. I don't think it should be interrupting. I think you should wait to the end, make a note, go back and then discuss it in, in full. Because there are times that you can't, you, you don't necessarily see this end or we don't want to go, excuse me, Mr. As you're reading. You know, that kind of thing. So it would make more sense to kind of wait till you're done.
Well, no, you would just go point of order, which is the Robert's rules of way.
I understand, sir. I just think it's better to go to the end. That's my opinion.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Think there are certain circumstances when it's appropriate to say right up front. I, you know, I want to move to address all of these individually. If we know that it's a, it's a contentious enough project or anything like that to have that flexibility to be able to.
Oh, okay.
Order and say, look, because of circumstances, we, you know, I feel we should do these individually.
Yeah, yeah, and that would be fine.
And that's the key, the flexibility and some discretion depending upon the situation that's being presented to us.
The may versus shall rule.
You know, I want to go back to what you're saying, Susan, that, that, that sometimes if, if he's reading through not applicable and goes to eleven eight, not applicable. And then it's on record that it was not applicable. I, I think it's best to address it immediately. And, and discuss it rather than come back afterwards.
And there should be some pausing as you're reading and looking up in between versus just reading it all in a thing.
Interrupting.
Yeah.
Because it really are interrupt, that's on hold.
Right.
But I think it's important to, to.
But that's part of the deliberation. To be deliberate about.
Yeah.
That discussion.
Well, you're never going to offend me if you interrupt me.
And we do a really good job of it.
Yes, you do. Tom, Tom does a great job.
You, you roll with it.
That was it. Please, every, everybody show up next in, in two, three weeks on December sixth. Every, everybody show up.
Do we have something on the agenda already?
Well, I have to. I wanted, I want to turn in payroll after that meeting. Well, it's the last meeting of the, of the year, so we're going to turn, I'm going to turn in the payroll. I'd just like to turn it, yeah, we, look at this. It's taken us a year, but we've got everybody there.
Next few weeks. The, would, would it be fair to, to push him off? That would, that would be, by the time we come back in January, that's two, two, four months.
Would be.
Nine weeks, eight weeks.
I don't, well, no, because they're, they're scheduled on December sixth to come in front of us. No, I think we, I think we should have the meeting, because we.
So we have one scheduled on the sixth and then we're going to have.
There's nothing until January tenth.
Okay, I'm all right with that.
Yeah.
Now, is that the preliminary?
Have we seen their preliminary? I thought it was just a sketch plan. Okay. Any other questions?
I asked Lee about some of the other ones and other ones possibly that haven't come forward. And everybody's waiting on DOTs and everything else.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, that's, I mean, whatever the board would like to do. One of the things we ordered is in case that they cannot come forward from filing until they obtain any other state or federal permits. Some entities will additionally promote on no permits until they get those permits to go through this process. Being here indicates that you can't even come forward till you get your other state or federal permits. So I think that's something that's holding a lot of applicants up right now because they're all waiting for the E P. These short standers, a lot of people are, and it's taking a while to get through that process.
So I have a question. So would it be more efficient to allow? Developers to come forward with the condition that they receive these approvals and get some of that out of the way? Or is it equally efficient to do it the way we're trying?
No, well, I mean, it cuts both ways. If you do it the way you currently do it. And it means changes to their application or their design because of some environmental issue. And they will have done that before it comes to you. In many cases, though, they also like to be reassured that they can move from the town, they can go back to the state. Or others, and then finance them and say, we've got rules from the town. Certainly, you know, so it cuts both ways.
So what do you suggest?
I have, I have always been comfortable with a process where. If they want to come and bore us prior to obtaining those approvals, that's fine and we just condition them with no permits being granted. Eternally until, until they clearly, they, they shouldn't deny them, they shouldn't deny any permits of the state.
Right, well, that's, that would be my question. Can we condition it on the fact that you do absolutely nothing on that property? Because we've, we've had people that start doing the work long before they see us.
Yeah, but they're not supposed to.
Right, they're not supposed to, but unfortunately, if they do, what are you going to do?
So is there a timeline? I thought there was a timeline that ones that come in front of us and waiting for things to. That they have to have to go to the next level.
There, there are timelines.
Right, so.
Tensions, but then they're having their other permits.
Okay.
If they, if they don't, they're waiting for D E P permits, you know, nine months out. Our timeline, our timeline requires the board to shoot.
That's what I'm saying.
We can't deny them or tell them you need to start all over again. It's not, it's out of their control.
Right.
Right, but that's, that's the reason that generally that we should wait until they have those permits. So that.
I, I.
Because everything else just gets hung up waiting.
We have made exception many times.
We have.
Allowed to, to move, we have actually approved with that condition that they can't get a permit.
We used to do it fairly often.
Yeah.
But it's implicit that they're not supposed to start any work until they get these approvals, so. It just means when they get them, they know that they're good to go. I mean, I would, I would like to, again, have the flexibility to do that because people trying to get. Investors financing or whatever, the fact that the board has largely approved the plan, but for approval by D O T. That gives them, you know, a clearer path to making the project happen.
And if it's a, I mean, what I would say is if it's something that would be a, a protracted town review process. There's a lot of value in going through that while the D E P is going on. So instead of getting your D E P application and say. Maybe waiting six or eight months before you get that to then go to the town process. Which gets involved with meetings and public hearings and, you know, certainly a lot of these site plans are, are straightforward without a whole lot of. Public input, but if it becomes a project where you've got a lot of public input back and forth. We request different things because of public comment. we request different things because of public comment, then that's a, an extra several months that could have been taken care of concurrent with the D E P process.
I'm with Jamie.
I, I don't care one way or the other.
Again, I can craft some language to look at that or some word to mention.
I mean, if we can do it, it helps to move things along and makes us seem more in partnership with the developers when they've dotted all their i's and crossed all their t's. I think we should try to do that when possible.
We've, we've made a great deal of progress since I got on the board, what, 12 years, 14 years ago? It used to take months, you know, five, six months to get stuff done. And now we, we seem to be able to get it out most of the time within six weeks from start to finish.
Well, Li Jie, I think you've had a very positive impact also on the operation of the. In my opinion.
Don't forget, the town has changed that to go.
It has, it has changed a great deal. And I, I think one of the, one of the good things that has come out of Li Jie is the fact that when the application comes to us, it's complete now. There's no, well, I didn't know about this, you know, should I have asked about? No, it's a complete application. It meets the guidelines.
Yeah. That's why it would take so long because we were reviewing twice, just to make sure.
Yeah, twice, twice would have been a good day.
All right, well, I move that we adjourn.
Is second.
Well, I have a one question. It's just. I just.